I hereby call to order the Roseville City Council meeting for Monday, December 2nd, 2024. Mr. City Manager, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Graff?
Here.
Councilmember Etten?
Present.
Councilmember Strawn?
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Mayor Rowe?
Here. And with us at the dais, we have our city attorney, Rachel Tierney, who's on my right at the end, and city manager Pat Trudgen is on my left at the other end of the dais. Other participants in the meeting will be introduced as agenda items come up on the meeting. We would ask folks, if you have a cell phone, to be sure and silence it, or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting this evening. We do have extra copies of the meeting agenda on the back table under the big clock, if you need a copy of the agenda. For members of the public, we also have a single copy of all the meeting materials in a big three-ring binder. If there's anything you need to refer to, that was, that's the place you'd want to go to check that out. So we want to make sure folks know that. When we get to the opportunities for public comment, we'll provide input as to what that process involves. But with that, we'll ask folks to stand, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, first on tonight's agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll check with city manager Trudgen to see if there's anything from a staff perspective that needs to be changed about tonight's agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I have no changes to the agenda.
All right. And we'll check with council members to see if there are any items council members wish to change on the agenda, or items council members may request to be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration. Does not appear to be the case. We'll do a quick double-check with folks in the audience. The, I just mentioned our consent agenda, which is on page two of the agenda, item, items in section 10. These items are normally taken up at the end of the meeting as a single motion with limited opportunity for input and discussion, because they're generally administrative in nature or non-controversial in nature. But if anybody happens to be here this evening to either speak to or ask a question about one of those items in section 10, 10A through J, this would be an opportunity to let us know, and we'll actually pull that item forward in the meeting so that we can take it up while you're here and still fresh. Is there anyone here tonight for an item in section 10 of tonight's agenda?
I am here to partway pizza, Roseville.
That?
Seven, seven I.
Is in section seven?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll, we'll be taking that up and it's normal order of business. That is not in section 10, so you're okay. Is there anyone here for an item in section 10? It does not appear to be the case. There being no changes to the agenda, then, is there a motion from the council to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
It's been moved by councilmember Schroeder, seconded by councilmember Strawn. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We have our agenda for this evening. Next on our agenda is our first opportunity for public comment. This is general public comment, not related to items on our agenda this evening, but we do always provide an opportunity at the start of each meeting for members of the public to speak to the council and the community about either issues of city business that aren't being considered this evening, or items that may be of interest to members of the community more broadly. So we'll check, is there anyone here this evening to speak about items not on tonight's agenda under general comment this evening? Appears to be the case. While that gentleman's coming up, we'll just note the procedure and process for general comment. We do have a three-minute time limit, which I'll try to enforce generously and gently. We also request that you address comments or questions to the council, and we'll attempt to respond if we can this evening, but oftentimes items need to be directed for follow-up after the meeting. With that, we have our first member of the public for general public comment. If you could introduce yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you. Bob Wilmes. I do understand that you have an agenda item here to recognize outgoing councilmember Etten, but I'm just wondering if you would like my brief comments?
It would be perfectly fine. That's been the past practice.
Thank you. Well, councilmember Etten, here you are. You've, you've made it through in excess of 12 years of service to the city of Roseville. I don't recall how many years you served on the Parks Commission, if it was the full six, five. Just a sincere thank you for what you have done for the city of Roseville. Roseville truly is a better place, having had you serve as a, as a commissioner, as a member of the council. In my service to Roseville, I had the pleasure of serving with a number of individuals, Craig Klausing, Amy Island, Dan, Jeff Johnson, Lisa Lalaberty, others. One quality that you brought and bring is the ideal of consensus. How can we find that middle ground? How can we work to move Roseville forward? And that's something that you carried forward from day one through today. And again, just thank you, thank you for that service. Oftentimes, it is, it can be a thankless job, but it can also be a very rewarding job. And so, wanted to acknowledge your service, wanted to acknowledge that sacrifice of you and your family. And so, again, thank you.
Thank you.
And enjoy your time off.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else for general public comment this evening? All right, doesn't appear to be the case. We will then move to the rest of our agenda this evening. Excuse me. That brings us to recognitions and donations. And our first recognition this evening is recognition of outgoing councilmember Jason Etten. And I believe Mr. Trudgen and I have a couple of things to say here, and I think Mr. Etten may too. So we'll join in the front of the dais here.
Well, thank you, everybody, for being here. It's been noted, it's kind of a recognition for Jason's service to the city, certainly 12 years on the city council, and it was five years, I wasn't sure if it was four or five, on the Park and Rec Commission. So really, for a substantial part of his life, and certainly his children's life, he's been serving the community very directly. As, as you know, Jason's probably always been very interested from a young age, grew up in Roseville, in serving the community in a variety of ways, and this is just another way that he has done it. I'm positive that after he leaves the city council, he'll continue to serve the community of Roseville in whatever way he finds, finds helpful. Jason's always been very active in a lot of our issues here in the last 12 years of city council, and covered a lot of things, but a couple of things that stood out to me, very strong about the environment and natural resources, really pushed to make sure that we had a robust natural resources management plan. We just adopted a new one on our last meeting, but we adopted the original one about 10 years ago. Very instrumental in the Green to Go ordinance about compostable containers, and really was an advocate for that over the years. Really pushed us on equity to make sure that we put racial equity at the forefront of everything that we've done for the past five or six years, and really intentional on that. And he's really been a leader in that and been involved in those conversations throughout the time here in a service on the council. He's also been very diligent to making sure that we continue to look professional as a city, and making sure that our packets and our resolutions and everything that we do is reflective of the great professional staff that we have. So appreciate him having many conversations and making sure that we continue to be better. I also personally want to thank him for being one of the five folks that appointed me a city manager interim basis back in 2013, and made me a permanent city manager in 2014. I really appreciate that. It's really been a joy to serve with you over these years, and I've learned a lot. So thank you for the encouragement and the coaching along the way. So with that, we do want to give you some formal recognition. First of all, on behalf of city staff and the community, want to present a rose to you in recognition of your service here. Hopefully you can display that in a way. Yeah, that'd be good. That'd be pretty tricky. So this is something we traditionally give out to employees, but you're a considered employee here as you work for us and you serve us here. So thank you for that. So I'll put that back in there so we don't drop it. I also want to give you this sign here, a street sign.
Oh.
The Jason Etten Way.
My wife's gonna love that in the house.
Jason Etten has his way in doing things here, and he makes sure he lets that be known. So we want to make sure that he's remembered. And this is, these are years of service, 2013 to 2024. So on behalf of the city, we'll give that to you as well.
Thank you.
A pie.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
This is unexpected. All right, thank you.
So just a couple remarks on, on my part, serving with Jason through this whole time, and perhaps being somewhat responsible for you being up in, in that seat in the council chambers.
You're part of the frame job, yeah.
So hopefully every one of the promises that we made to get you to serve has come true, and it's been just as easy as we promised, and no, no trouble, no complications, no issues, just like we said it would be back in 2012, when we had some conversations with you to, to get you to, to run. But I think, as I've been reflecting on your service to the community, I think Pat, you know, touched on a number of the things that you've been very influential in. But I really have noted through the whole time of, of watching you and serving alongside you, how much you care about the people of Roseville, and especially people who may be, you know, having more of a struggle in life than, than you or I. And you've really worked, you've, you've not only had that care, but you've also worked to do better for folks and to, to give people that opportunity to succeed. I know you're very much involved in the Food and Security Group in Ramsey County during the COVID time, when we were looking at that, and you've been a strong advocate for Keystone Community Services and other providers of services to people in the community. And you've certainly been supportive of the changes we've made in our police department, and hiring the social workers, and, and our housing navigator, and things like that. So I think that's a direct reflection of, of your care for the community, and how you walk the walk and not just talk the talk. And you really are a leader in the community outside of these chambers, and that's a very important role that not all of us sometimes do as well, but you set a great example for all of us and have done so, even before you were on the council. So we're very appreciative of that, and I personally am appreciative of that. So I wanted to make sure and express that this evening. We do also have another parting gift for you. This is a, your compilation of all your pictures that are up on the wall over here, and your service to the community. So smaller than the same.
But you didn't put my first picture with the dark hair in it.
No, we couldn't find that for some reason.
Okay.
But, but once again, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to serve with you, and we wish you all success in your endeavors after being on the council. After all, you are, you are a young man. You've got lots of time left, so we really appreciate that, and wanted to say thank you for your service.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure.
Where are we going to put that, Jessica? Thank you all for being here, those of you who accidentally happened upon my retirement party, and those of you who took the time to come and support me. Thank you, young man. It all started with parks, with a neighborhood park cleanup, and that morphed into being on the Park and Rec Commission, and helping to pass a master plan for our park system, and then the park renewal program that helped fund major changes to our system. These have dramatically improved our parks and our entire city with highly-used park buildings, playgrounds, playing surfaces, pathways, and the first real investments in natural resources in our park system. I'd like to thank Lonnie Brocky and his leadership team who invested in me and helped teach me about excellence in the work for the city. Lonnie has been and continues to be a trusted friend and advisor. Here are some things that were accomplished during my 12 years on the city council that I'm most proud of. They've listed most of them. For the environment, we achieved the top level in the Green Sub Cities Program. We added solar arrays on our buildings as well as off-site. We reduced our energy and water use, and we recently added our Green to Go program to reduce styrofoam and plastic in our waste stream. Equity and inclusion, we joined the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. We hired an equity inclusion manager. We created our Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan, refined commission work with the new Equity and Inclusion Commission, and we are taking concrete steps to make all of this integral in how we operate as a city. We made measured and planned decisions to fully fund and maintain our infrastructure and other capital needs. We made large inroads on affordable housing, from high-density buildings to our land trust program with Habitat for Humanity that is now helping families build equity in the homes they live in. We transitioned the fire department to full-time and expanded the number of firefighters and their training to better serve the increased needs of our city. We changed how we do police work to include developing, including developing our community action team and adding our multicultural advisory committee. We also took steps to take care of the mental and physical well-being of our public safety officers and firefighters to ensure that they are healthy and whole when they serve us. Beyond these specific examples, the most important thing I worked to do is find sensible solutions to whatever the consideration was at the time. No virtue signaling, no political parties, no listening to the loudest voices without searching for the quieter ones, and no short-term fixes. I worked to find thoughtful solutions that involve compromise and working together as central pieces of my philosophy of governance. It was always about the big picture for the people in the city of Roseville. Of course, not everyone loved all of my votes or all the decisions of the council in the last 12 years, but we have followed a model of good governance. We've all seen the news in other cities. We've followed a model of good governance in working together as a city council, with the residents, and with our staff. Thank you to our excellent staff, and thank you to Pat Trudgen especially for your leadership. Our staff took the lead on many of the important things I've listed. Thank you to the commissioners and the different council members I've worked with in my 17 years. Thank you to the people in this community who have been engaged in the work we do together, including those who have helped with my campaigns, and those who've helped hold my feet to the fire. Most importantly, thank you to my family. My wife, Jessica, totally, I'd cry, has been a constant supporter and advisor. She spent years caring for our young children and keeping our family going when I headed out to my next parks or city council thing. Thank you to my children who have helped with campaigns, assisted in my oath of office, and kept me humble. You've lost a lot of time with me as I did this work. Thank you to my parents, who have supported me from the start and continue to stand beside me. Thank you to my brother and sister, who have always been supporters. My brother and I used to share a room growing up, and my sister used to hit us on the head with her brush. Now we try to help each other with big kid things as much as we can. Thank you to my in-laws. They are here tonight. My mother-in-law was a wizard at giving volunteers for literature drops. I know that we have all learned and grown a great deal from me serving Roseville, and we are better for it. So thank you. Local government is where it's at. We get things done, we innovate, we compromise, we make our community better in ways that directly affect the everyday lives of the people who live here, from flushing your toilet to taking a walk in the park. Similar to when I got started, last week we passed the first-ever system-wide natural resources master plan. It feels like a nice bookend for now. I'm not disappearing, though. I will volunteer more with the natural resources events, support our city and community partners, and look for ways to be involved in the future at this and other levels of government. Thank you all.
And we're not done with recognitions this evening. We have another recognition of somebody who's served the community for a long time. We were just noting that it's actually longer than I have. So, but I'm, I'm catching up. We have our Visit Roseville CEO, or now a former CEO, Julie Warren, who served the community with Visit Roseville, and before that, before the name change, Roseville Visitors Association for 18 years. We have a proclamation recognizing her service, and so the first order of business would be for the council to consider that proclamation. And I just realized, I'm not sure I have a copy of that one, so I'm going to have to get that up on the screen here. Oh, you got it? Thank you very much.
That's why you print your packet.
The paper packet. The paper packet comes back to haunt me. The proclamation or resolution reads as follows: Whereas Julie Warren has been involved in Minnesota's hospitality and tourism industry for over 30 years of total involvement, including 18 years as chief executive officer of Roseville Visitors Association and Visit Roseville; and whereas Ms. Warren will be concluding her illustrious career, and has concluded her illustrious career in tourism and hospitality industry, should be retiring at the end, I guess, at the end of 2024, so maybe a little bit of time left; and whereas Ms. Warren has tirelessly, tirelessly promoted and advocated for Roseville during her 18-year tenure, or as some would say, reign, as she served the community with enthusiasm, professionalism, and dedication throughout her service to Visit Roseville; and whereas, under Ms. Warren's leadership, Visit Roseville became a leading destination marketing organization in the state of Minnesota and the Midwest, and that is true; and whereas, in 2022, Ms. Warren was recognized by Explorer Minnesota as the state's Tourism Professional of the Year, and just in October of this year, the Minnesota Association of Convention and Visitors bureaus recognized Ms. Warren with the Roger Toussaint Award, which is the organization's most prestigious award to recognize her profound impact on the tourism industry; and whereas, Ms. Warren led key initiatives that promoted Roseville community, including the Oval illumination that placed holiday lights around the oval, and Roseville in Bloom Program, very popular in 2020, where the six-foot roses that were created by individual artists were placed throughout the community, and I believe most of them remain and are being enjoyed to this day and hopefully for many years into the future. And whereas, Ms. Warren's service to the community extended beyond Visit Roseville, including being an active member of the Roseville Rotary, friends of the Roseville Oval, and the Roseville Police Foundation, who's trying to keep her services ongoing for indefinitely, probably on the foundation. Now, therefore be it resolved, the city of Roseville commends Julie Warren for her dedicated service to the community for the past 18 years as CEO of Visit Roseville, and wishes her all the best in her retirement. Is there a motion?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to adopt that resolution, recognizing Ms. Warren's service. Any discussion on the motion?
Well, I'd just like to say, as the board member with Visit Roseville, it's been a pleasure working with Julie Warren. She's very innovative, and one of the things that's missed in this is the time we spent during COVID, which was a adjustment time for everybody, and she was a great leader during that time, and got us through it in, pretty much unscathed at, at the end of it all. So, thank you very much.
All right. The other discussion on the motion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that recognition is given. But there's more, and I'll join Pat down at, in front of the dais again.
Oh, they just got all kinds of signs.
So I think that resolution talked about everything that's so great about Julie. I've been fortunate to work with her actually my whole time here, but certainly as a board member since 2013, and really appreciated the enthusiasm that she brings. She always is thinking about how to promote Roseville, always has ideas. Some of them are really great ideas, some of them don't always come to fruition. But hey, you know, you gotta try a little bit. And so everything about her, to use a favorite word of hers, is awesome. She is just awesome, and we're going to miss her considerably. She's really built a great organization, and I would say that her impact will be lasting well beyond her years here. We mentioned the roses around Roseville, but just the general awareness of Roseville in our, in our state in the Midwest is really due to Julie's work. She's also set up the organization well for success, and I'm sure will continue to be a great organization, but we'll certainly miss you tremendously, Julie. So, on behalf of the community and the city of Roseville, I want to present to you this rose.
Surprise.
I'm gonna break it if I don't, careful. The rose for you to display.
Oh, how pretty is that? Thank you.
And then once again, a sign, the Julie Warren Way. There's a way about Julie as well. You know, when you have a conversation with Julie. And reflects her years of service with Roseville Visitors Association, or Visit Roseville from 2006 to 2024.
How fun is that? Thank you.
So, thank you, Julie.
Thank you so very much. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. The only thing I was going to add before, before the due recognition is that I was on the board, before Wayne was representing the city council, and I always feared, even before I was on the board, that we might lose Julie to another destination marketing organization, because you're so good. And I never thought, in all my plans to make sure we kept you, that we would lose you to retirement. I guess that shows that I don't, I don't have an answer for everything. But, but you have really earned and really deserve some time of retirement and enjoyment of something besides what you've been doing for the last 30 years. And we really appreciate that you've served Roseville and, and stuck with us. And also, I'm not sure if it was you that came up with perfectly positioned, but let's give you credit for it. I think that's, that's also going to be one of your legacies for Roseville. So thanks so much.
As yours is Oval illumination, the mayor came up with that. Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say?
No, I, well, yes. Thank you very much. Thank you. I've, I've had a, a great 18 years, and I just, I mean, this is a great city to work for, and I'm, I'm just very touched that I get a street sign. And, and I just remember the first time, the first city council thing, I was scared stiff when I came to city council, because how do you address the mayor? How do you address the, the, the council members? So, and it was just, I mean, I look back to where I started, to what has taken place. And I mean, we've really done, we've done a lot. It's been great. Perfectly positioned. Thank you. That's super cool. Thank you very much. I appreciate this.
All right. Anyone else we need to recognize? Or anybody else want a street sign? I should, I should play, oh, there we have it. All you have to do is either serve on a board for Visit Roseville, or as the CEO of Visit Roseville for 18 years, or serve on the city council for 12 years, and you got your sign. And I should clarify, it's just a street sign. You don't actually get a street. I know, scam.
No, they've broken it.
We do actually have one more item in this section of our agenda, which is a proclamation related to human trafficking awareness and prevention. And so, I will read that proclamation, and then once again, a motion would be in order to adopt it. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas human trafficking is a nationwide public health, actually, and worldwide, public health and civil rights crisis, its victims and survivors are everywhere, with Roseville being no exception. And whereas, human trafficking includes both labor and sex trafficking, while both international, with both international and domestic victims. And whereas, anyone can become a victim of human trafficking, while women and girls are the primary victims, victims and survivors come from every background, race, gender, sexual orientation, and economic status. sexual orientation, and economic status. Traffickers target individuals who, for any reason, are vulnerable. And whereas young people are particularly vulnerable to trafficking and exploitation, but face many barriers in reporting what has happened to them. Minnesota's Safe Harbor Law recognizes that any youth under the age of 18 who comes forward will no longer face criminal prosecution and will instead receive comprehensive and trauma-informed services. Safe Harbor also seeks to provide communities across Minnesota with the knowledge, skills, and resources to effectively identify and work with sexually exploited and at-risk youth. And whereas all communities must seek to prevent human trafficking before it can occur by promoting a safe, healthy, and supportive environment. And whereas the City of Roseville is striving to become a place where human trafficking does not exist, where people have opportunities available to them, and where all people are treated as fully human and worthy of a supportive community and of freedom. Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Roseville declares January of 2025 as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month in Roseville.
So moved.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Bratton, and seconded by Councilmember Schroeder to adopt that proclamation. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That proclamation is approved. All right. I've been told that I have to give you the opportunity to leave if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting. I really don't understand that, because we've got a lot of interesting and exciting things to talk about, but if the people are so inclined, we understand, and we're happy that you could be here and be part of the celebrations this evening. With that, we'll then move to our business items. So our first business item this evening is to consider adopting the final 2025 City of Roseville budget, capital improvement plan, and tax levy for the City of Roseville, as well as our economic development authority, and I'm not sure who's going to start, Mr. Trudgen, you'll start this evening for this item.
Yes, and if I could just back up a second. I'm just made aware that one of the items on the consent agenda for the certification has a business listed on there that we actually need to take off until we have a hearing, so that would be item 10H, and in particular, if the council's willing, we can take that up here, take the action versus the consent agenda.
Oh, you're saying we need to take consent with a public hearing rather than with?
Well, just so we can take the specific action, if we could pull it from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Right now. So I'm sorry, I missed that at the beginning.
Nope, that's all right. So you're saying there's one of the businesses in item 10H that we want to consider separately from everything else?
Right. Well, we want to be changing the list here that we're certifying.
Got it. Okay.
I'll explain more.
So, just to be clear, there would have to be a separate action at another meeting on that business, or you want to take a separate action at this meeting on that business?
So what I want to do is, you know, take action on the certification, but remove one of the addresses from the list.
Okay.
There is a pending appeal that I want to go through the process before we certify it.
Got it. I believe if there's no objection from the council, we could just take it up on the consent agenda with the understanding that that address would be removed, and you can explain it at the time?
Sure, and just for the record, it's 2801 Snelling Avenue or Muto.
Very good. We'll note that at the time and continue with the agenda as.
Okay. All right. Sorry for the interruption.
Nope, I appreciate that. Appreciate that, especially if somebody was here and we were going to be taking it up tonight. I wanted to make sure we could do that earlier. All right. That does bring us then to the 2025 budget discussion, as noted, and I think, Mr. Trudgen, you're still kicking this off?
I am.
All right.
So, thank you, Mayor. Sorry again for the interruption here. So as you mentioned, tonight, we are looking for the final approval and consideration of the 2025 city budget and property tax levy, as well as the 2025 EDA levy. As you know, we have been talking about the budget for quite a long time, most of this past year here, and so this is our last meeting that we'll be doing it. On the 23rd of September, the city council did pass a preliminary levy and budget for both the EDA and the city, and I would note at that point, the city did, the city council did add a couple of things to the city manager budget. One was adding $6,000 for an increase in council salaries, $73,000 for a half-year of an HR manager. That was a request that was put to me, but not included in the budget, but the council voted to put that in, at least for the time being, funded for half the year, meaning it would start July 1st, and then also added $20,000 for, towards Tubman further services. That would use public safety aid and not levy dollars. So all told, the city manager budget and what was passed at the preliminary point was $73.6 million with a levy of $30.3 million, which represents a 5.44% increase or a $1.5 million increase. So if the median valued home in Roseville was just $360,500, we'll see an increase of $9.72 per month or $116.64 per year. That's not include the EDA. The proposed 2025 Economic Development Authority levy was $364,000, which is a modest increase of eight cents per month or 96 per year. So, this is how the impact would look from '24 to '25. As you can see, the property tax levy at $9.72, eight cents increase, and these are all the median valued homes for the EDAs, eight cents, and the utility rates as proposed in the packet is $1.76, so a total of $11.56. And this is something that we do try to compare on a regular basis to see how we stand when our median valued homes. Everybody else's home is going to be above or below that, or perhaps at that median, so the different, there'll be different results for all these, but this is a good benchmark that we do use.
Mr. Trudgen, before you leave that slide, I noticed that the row at the bottom, it says levy change for the year. First, the '24 and '25 columns, that's actually the total.
Yes.
The total cost for that taxpayer for the year changes the third column.
Yeah, the dollar change is $130.
Right, okay. Yeah, just wanted to be clear, there wasn't a $2,000 change for the average taxpayer.
So, let's control here for a second. You, Michelle, advance that. I'm not sure what's happening here. Well, I was going to put up, just showing kind of what contributes to the $1.5 billion levy increase, and there's some technical difficulties.
Where is that?
It's a Word document that's on there. So I would stand for questions. This is kind of a very brief overview. Lots of material in the packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have and get into the detail, but we'll try to pull that up just for reference, and that just talks about what is driving that levy increase there. So if you go to the investment to maintain city services there. I can do it here, I can do it now.
Okay. It looks like the screen had just frozen there for a moment.
Yeah. So these are the impacts that we have in the budget here, so mostly personnel costs that really drive the majority of it, and we have the housing officer, fire inspector, that'll be levy-supported. Half of a levy for the police commander position, the other half for 2025 will be through the public safety aid. We have some reclassifications of an accounting manager. We are showing the HR manager with a July 1st start, which is $73,000 or half. We also have the increased mayor and council pay of $6,000, the step increases in the COLA of 3%, all add up to $1.2 million. We also have increased costs for supplies and operations and contracts, $354,000 to get us to that $1.567 million. So I just wanted to provide that background, so we know how we got there. With that, I will pause and see if you have any questions, and be happy to answer them as best I can.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trudgen. Are there questions from the council at this time for staff? Does not appear to be the case. I know we've been discussing the budget for a few months now, as you noted, so I think most of us are hopefully pretty familiar with this. At this point, we will provide an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the proposed 2025 city budget of $73.6 million, as well as the tax levy of $30 million and some change, and also our proposed fees, which we'll be talking about a little later on for utilities. Any public comment in relation to the proposed 2025 budget or tax levy? Not appear to be the case. Council, we have three resolutions. The first resolution, which we take up, is the budget resolution. That is the spending plan for the city, and certainly the idea of taking that up first is that if we make changes to the budget, that may impact the subsequent amount of funding that we look at through other means. Is there a motion from the council on the first resolution in the packet, adopting the 2025 annual budget and capital improvement plan for the City of Roseville?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Bratton. Discussion on the motion, as the maker of the motion, Councilmember Groff.
No, we've discussed this quite a bit, and we've gone over the details. I feel comfortable.
All right. As the second, or Councilmember Bratton?
I think I agree with that, thank you, but it's important to note that we're making some relatively small investments in some big areas that are important for us to do, and I know that in the future, you all have to make some more decisions, but I think this is going to offer a little more support, especially to our public safety folks and for our assistant city manager, and so we'll make some important changes there.
Great. Other discussion on the motion, Councilmember Schroder?
Yes, I'd like to propose an amendment to change the HR manager start date to 1-1-26, because the, I'm getting lots of calls from people who are, got their property tax statements and are really concerned about spending money at the city, and this was not in the city manager's original budget, and this was added later on, and so I'd like to try to give the residents a little more breathing room for a little more time.
All right. Is that a motion to amend the budget, to remove that item, or to move it out to 1-1-26?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
I'm going to second this just for discussion.
All right. It's been seconded by Councilmember Bratton. Once again, a motion to move out the start date for the HR manager position to 1-1-26, which would essentially remove that from the '25 budget. Further discussion from the maker of the motion, Councilmember Schroder?
I think I've made my point on it. Thank you.
All right. As the second, or Councilmember Bratton, you get the first opportunity.
Awesome. I actually agree with all the things that Councilmember Schroder said, same time I really appreciate it. I asked our city manager for some more supportive reasons for what the organization was going to get by adding this position, and those important, clearing out room to focus on some of the big things that we've been spending time on. We are almost done with our vision and mission and goals. We have department-level pieces that are going to attach to that. We have important equity work that will be part of that, so I think that I have been convinced that this is an important piece and that we should move ahead with that.
All right. Other discussion on the motion to advance the start date, Councilmember Strawn?
I'd like to speak in support of the original decision, mostly because I had been in support of this to begin with. There are many changes happening in compliance at the state, federal, and level that require the expertise of a specific HR manager, and I think that those are really important to the success of the city. The Paid Family Medical Leave Act is coming, the emergency safe and sick leave compliance and wage notifications, the things that continue to change that just require that expertise. In the last few weeks, the Fair Labor Standards Act and the wage in our division have had changes that were previously planned, that aren't now happening, and I think it just requires a lot of, an expertise, a level of expertise that's dedicated to this area. And the original proposition was that it would start on 7/1 in order to give a little bit of breathing room to the taxpayers, while also providing an opportunity for the city to get a head start on some of these important initiatives that are happening way outside of our parameters.
All right. Other discussion on the motion? Okay. And I would just add to that discussion that certainly mindful of the impact to the taxpayers and understand that concern, at the same time, in addition to all of the things that an HR manager would need to be doing in benefit to the organization, just in that regard, I think that the point about the impact to the time and work of the assistant city manager, who is essentially functioning as an HR manager, and the department manager of the administrative department, which among other things includes the HR department, is a lot to ask, in addition to all of the things that we would actually prefer that our assistant city manager be doing, and so I think it just makes sense from an organizational point of view. In a little bit of research that I've did since the original discussion in September, I would note that some, there are some standards out there for sort of number of HR employees per, say, 100 employees in an organization, and we're sort of below the minimum of some of those standards that I see out there professionally in the work of HR, and so I don't think we're, I don't think we're luxuriating and excessive staff at this point, and just knowing the size of our organization, and especially the number of seasonal employees that are dealt with, you know, in the summertime, and then obviously we have our, you know, the complications of issues with HR as we go forward and all the regulations, I think it just makes sense to add this position, and I think as Councilmember Strawn mentioned, the sort of compromised position of making it a half-year budget impact rather than the full year, I think makes some sense. It doesn't mean that the position goes away in '26. We do have to fully fund it for the full year going forward, but it at least helps in the near term, in terms of that taxpayer impact. If there's no other discussion, we have the motion before us to amend, to start that position on 1-1-26. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That motion fails. Councilmembers Strawn, Groff, Etten, and Mayor Rowan, opposition. That brings us to the original motion then. That motion is once again to adopt the resolution setting the 2025 budget for the City of Roseville at that 70, I guess.
73 million.
73.6 million. You'd think I would have remembered it for that short period of time. With that, is there any further discussion on the original motion this evening? All right. We've got that motion before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. That motion passes four to one, with Councilmember Schroder in opposition. That covers the budget. Next, we have a resolution, the second resolution is in relation to the city tax levy for 2025. Once again, the resolution sets the levy at $30,352,000 and some change. Is there a motion from the council on that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Bratton, seconded by Councilmember Groff to adopt the levy on that resolution. Discussion on that motion, maker of the motion, Councilmember Bratton?
Nope.
All right. Second, or Councilmember Groff?
No.
All right. Any additional discussion on the motion setting the levy?
And I would just note for members of the public, the tax levy is essentially the budget minus every other way of paying for the budget, and what's left is the tax levy to the taxpayers of Roseville. With that, we've got the motion before us, seeing no other discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and we have our tax levy. And then finally, for the Economic Development Authority levy, that's the third resolution, setting that levy at $364,856. Is there a motion related to that?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Etten, to approve the EDA levy for 2025. Discussion on that motion, Councilmember Strawn as the maker of the motion?
I appreciate all the work they continue to do, and I appreciate that they continue to do it even with this very lean budget.
All right. As the second, or Councilmember Bratton, discussion?
No.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion to approve the Economic Development Authority levy for 2025? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That levy is approved. So that's our first round of approvals related to the 2025 city finances. The next round is consideration of the 2025 utility rates, which actually pays almost 60% of the city budget, and I believe, is that Ms. Petrick that's kicking that one off?
Yes. Okay. I should note, Ms. Petrick is our finance director. I'm going to keep it kind of short and sweet. In October, Ellers presented the updated utility rate study. In November, the council reviewed the proposed utility rates, and what we are proposing is a 0% increase in the sanitary sewer and storm drainage rates, and a 5.5% increase in the water rates, and then the recycling rates are increased for the new contract. And you can see that for the quarter, for all the utility rates, it's a $5.29 increase in the water rates. a $5.29 increase, which is $21.14 for the whole year, for an average consumer, which is 1,000 gallons per month, or per, sorry, 12,000 gallons per quarter, and 11,000 gallons of sewer consumption per quarter.
All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Petrick. Are there questions for staff on the proposed utility rates for 2025? Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes, earlier today, I had a conversation with our city manager, who had worked with the finance director on the storm drainage account. As you could see from our packet, that that was quite healthy of a fund. And what I had requested was, what would this fund look like if we had a 2% reduction in the fee? And then on top of that, a chart was done where they added in 3% inflation, which we normally don't do, just to make it a little more, you know, make sure that we were accounting for things. So with a 3% inflation put into the expense, and then a 2% reduction in the cost, as you can see from the chart here, that it's still extremely healthy. And so I would like to have us consider reducing that particular account by the 2%, which would be a .53 per quarter reduction in these rates.
Thank you, Councilmember Schroeder. I would just note, for folks in the control booth, we are getting a lot of blinking of the screen every once in a while here, so I'm not sure what's causing that, but hopefully we can get to the bottom of that issue and not be too impacted by it here as we go forward, and it's better now. Councilmember Schroeder, do you want to propose that yet as a motion?
Yes, I do. And the other piece I'd say is, after a conversation with the city manager, it was felt that this was not unreasonable to ask, so there was no hard objectives on his side, correct?
Yes, correct. If I could, Councilmember Schroeder and Councilmember Eton also had some similar questions as well, and so we did take a look at that. And while we don't typically add inflation to our projected costs, we just wanted, just to check that out. So under the proposed one in the packet, at the end of 20 years, we'd have an estimated balance of $12 million. Now, say that with a couple of caveats. One is that we know there's some type of inflation going on, especially as you go 20 years. So while we may have that amount of dollars in there, or somewhere around there, the costs may go up considerably, so that gap might be shorter. Second is that we also continue to be, are working towards refining our stormwater management plan over the next couple of years. Each year, we look at it and try to move stuff up. We know we have a substantial amount of needs. So with that in mind, we did take a look at just lower by 2%. And that bottom chart does show just a 2% without any inflation, and that gave us a roughly a balance a little bit over $10 million. If we were to add, I don't have the chart for the inflation here, but if we were to add 3%, we'd be about $9 million balance on there. Now, once again, I apologize for the screen. I'm not sure what's going on. Maybe we can just switch from that screen, possibly, in the control room, or it could be the cord. So with all that in mind, knowing that we continually look at this every single year, that I think that we feel we have sufficient balance to move forward if the council so desires to have a 2% reduction in the rates. I think that's about a .53 for the residential unit, .53 drop in what the rates would, from what's being proposed for the residential unit, or $2.12 over the year, a drop. Would not seem to negatively impact. As I said, we do look at it every year. We always do want to be careful of yo-yoing back and forth when you're having a big increase and not, but as you know, we did have a substantial, was it 33% increase before last? So we have built the reserves here. So we know we will be continuing to come back to this here. So with all that considered, I think from the staff perspective, we don't object strongly. We just want to make sure we keep the eye and the prize here to make sure we have sufficient funds, but I think with this adjustment, we find.
All right, and just to clarify, it's a one-time 2% reduction in the rate for 2025, and then this just projects that going forward at that reduced amount, but no further reductions are taken into account in this projection.
Correct.
Right, okay, just to clarify. So it's a one-time reduction this year?
For this year.
And then we make decisions in outgoing years. Thoughts from councilmembers? I don't know that we have a motion quite yet on the table, because we don't have a second to that, but thoughts from councilmembers, Councilmember Strawn?
Thank you. My understanding, as we talked about the rates previously, was that we were accommodating for some capital needs and some other things that had been pushed off, given our increase, this big increase we had two years ago, and trying, so that we had been pushing some things, kind of in kicking the can down the road. And I'm concerned about that we would make things worse in that regard, so I don't know if you can speak to that, Ms. Petrick?
Yes, we have Public Works, and I have worked on this, and there is a phased-in amount in the capital improvement plan from 2025 through 2031, and in 2032, the amount goes up to their needed value as of today's costs. So keeping in mind, costs keep going up. They may need more to do their projects. We did take a look at, well, if we didn't do the phase-in, the charts do change, and I caution people that a chart that's estimating 20 years out shouldn't be relied on more than three years. But we do look at it every year. Public Works is in the process of refining the projects. We can live with a one-time reduction, and the fund will be able to cover operations and capital in 2025 and '26 at this point in time.
All right. Other questions or feedback from the council on this? Councilmember Eton?
I just want to make a motion to approve the 2% reduction for 2025 for the storm drainage capital fund fees.
I would second that.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Eton, seconded by Councilmember Schroeder, to make that reduction as proposed.
Mr. Mayor, I am passing out a resolution that reflects the lower stormwater rates. It's on the second page. You'll see the 24 rate, for instance, the single-family residential and duplex, 24 rates, $26.75. It's been lowered to $26.22, and all the other rates are lowered by 2%, as you can see.
On the stormwater, okay.
Just the stormwater.
Right, so this is a revised version of the resolution that was in the original packet materials?
Yeah.
All right, we've got the motion before us, once again, made by Councilmember Eton, seconded by Councilmember Schroeder, to adopt that 2% reduction. Is it fair to say that the maker of the motion is essentially moving this resolution?
Yes.
Bench handout, so we don't have to do it twice?
Yeah.
All right, and the seconder is?
Yes.
All right with that, okay. Discussion on the motion, as the maker of the motion, Councilmember Eton?
Thank you. This is one of our healthiest funds. Even with the phased-in approach, we never get below three times what the expenses are planned to be at this time, which is dramatically different from our other capital funds. And I feel like we're going to need that 2% somewhere else down the road, and I think it's appropriate, as a city, to be thinking about where we can, even though it's small, where we can make a change, acknowledging that we have enough, and down the road, other decisions could be made. But you can, looking at our packet, just looking at the other funds, the other funds are nowhere near as healthy as this fund. So I think if, looking at 2025, with that phased-in approach, having three times the amount of money beyond the needed money. So it's not that we have just three times, it's beyond what is needed for the year. So I feel like this is a reasonable, fairly small change, but an acknowledgement.
All right, and as the seconder, Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes, I made most of my points originally in presenting it, so no more comment.
Other discussion on the motion, Councilmember Groff?
Because this is a small amount, I will support it, but I'm very concerned about our sewer funds. Our infrastructure is important to me, and I don't want us to make any cuts that would endanger that. We are an older suburb. We're a first-string suburb, and I know from other suburbs, their experiences, if you let these funds get too low, then you run into trouble down the road. So I will support this because of the projections not looking that way, but I am concerned about that precedent this late in the game.
All right, other discussion, Councilmember Schroeder, excuse me, Councilmember Strawn?
Thank you. I guess I would echo the "this late in the game." We've had months and months and months where we've talked about this, and that this would come up at the last minute, I guess to appease people who have to pay it, of course, but also, you know, we've had many times to have this discussion, and so to bring it up at this last minute feels a little bit kind of disingenuous. So I guess I would want to make sure that we would take these hard looks at things earlier in the season, when there's an opportunity for people to comment and for people to know what's going on, and they have a good understanding of what might actually occur.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Eton?
I appreciate the points that this feels like a last-minute decision. I would note that Councilmember Schroeder and I have asked for several months to get the updated, what would it look like if there was a capital change, and it was promised for tonight, and we got it in our packet. So this is not a thing where we said, hey, how can we change the budget on Monday night, but rather something we've been asking for, these projections, as far as adding back in the capital improvements, that had been held back to make sure that the fund was whole. So it's not a, it's not really a last-minute one, but I understand how it feels that way.
All right, is there any further discussion on the motion? I would just note that I initially, on noting this change that was being brought forward, I was concerned, especially on the storm sewer side, because I know it's actually, as is noted in the materials, it's storm water, more so than storm sewer. We've got a lot of ponds, we've got a lot of what's known as best management practices, or BMPs, which is rain gardens, other features like that, all of which need maintenance. And I know we've been working over the last few years, if not more specifically, over the last couple of years, to really get a good handle on what that, those needs are, and I'm not 100% sure that we're fully there yet, and so that gave me pause. However, clearly, the fund is pretty healthy, and this is a one-time reduction in the rate, so I will be supportive of the change as it's proposed. We have the motion before us to adopt the bench handout resolution, setting the utility rates for 2025, with the 2% reduction in the stormwater rate. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That is the utility rates for 2025. That then brings us to consideration of the 2025 fee and administrative penalty schedules, and I believe Assistant City Manager Rebecca Olson will be introducing this item for us this evening, or bringing it back for our consideration. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I'm going to sit here so I don't mess up the computer and stroke lights going, but thank you. So tonight, you're being asked to formally adopt the fee and penalty schedule, as you do every year. This year's a little bit different because we have been going through a recodification process. So with that, staff has been working the last few months to go through our city code and pull out any and all of the penalties that are administrative in nature, and put them into a separate document for the administrative penalty document, for transparency purposes and for ease of use. In addition, we've reorganized the fee schedule, and so it has a little bit of a different look. In front of you tonight, there is a bench handout. There have been a couple updates. Some of it is mostly formatting, but I did want to highlight two additional changes that were just errors. If you look at the clean version of your penalty schedule on page 15, line 125 had a previous reference to the zoning district R1, R2. We've changed that to LDR and LMDR, I believe that's not my area, so excuse me on that one.
You got it right.
And then on line 136, the fence fee had inadvertently gotten changed to $58. It should be $57. With that, those are the changes that have been updated since the last time you saw this document. You are being asked to adopt the ordinance as well as an ordinance summary, given the fact that it is an enormous document. When we do the recodification and adopt the ordinance that effectively creates our new code of ordinances, this will get incorporated in there as well as an appendix. So we are working with our recodification company to get that taken care of, so that will be coming forward as well. But tonight, you have the ordinance and the resolution for the ordinance summary. And if you have any questions, I'm here to help answer.
All right, thank you, Ms. Olson. Questions from the council on the proposed 2025 penalty and fee schedules? Well, acknowledge and appreciate the update to the formatting that I think makes it even more clear for folks who are using this, to be able to find the fees and understand the relative nature of the fees relative to each other, that some that may not have been bold in earlier draft are just as important and standalone as their purpose, rather than being under other fees that were bold above them. I think it just makes it clearer for everyone. So I do want to, once again, thank staff for making that additionally more clear. Are there any other questions or comments from council? I should note that we should provide an opportunity for members of the public to speak to this item as well. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to the proposed 2025 fees and penalties? It's not appeared to be the case. I apologize. I think I forgot to ask for public comment on the utility rates, but it's water on the bridge now. With that, is there a motion from the council relative to the fee and administrative penalty schedules?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Schroeder.
Bench.
Discussion for the bench handout, correct?
Yeah, for the bench handout, correct.
Discussion on the motion, as the maker of the motion, Councilmember Groff?
No, I appreciate the new format. It's moving in the right direction. It's clearer, easier to use.
All right, other discussion on the motion, as seconder?
I appreciate the detail that went into this, and so I'm not surprised that there might be one or two things in there that we may need to update, but thank you for all the work. And I agree with the mayor that the highlighting some of those areas makes it much easier for people to go through, so thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the 2025 fee and administrative penalty schedules as presented in the bench handout, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Those items are approved. Thank you again to staff on that one. Councilmember Eton?
I want to move the summary.
So this would be the resolution?
The ordinance summary.
Authorizing, so just to be clear, the original motion was a motion to adopt the ordinance with the bench handout chart as the addition to that, so we're just clear on that, right?
Second.
And this would be the motion to authorize publication of a summary via a resolution. I heard a second from Councilmember Strawn. Moved by Councilmember Eton, seconded by Councilmember Strawn, to authorize publication of a summary by resolution. This requires a supermajority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, meeting the supermajority requirement, and we are authorized to publish a summary, which will save the taxpayer dollars. That then brings us to item 7D, which is considering a business license, and I'm not sure anymore about an ordinance amendment related to Roseville Lutheran Church operating a temporary overnight shelter in 2025. We have our community development director, Janice Gunlock, with us this evening to introduce this item and clarify my unsureness in that regard.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a business license request. It would allow Roseville Lutheran Church to operate a temporary overnight shelter. Some of the council may recall, I think, back in late 2018, early 2019, this particular church, I think along with one or two others, came forward for a temporary overnight shelter. At the time, we didn't have anything in our code to sort of approve these, so the interim use permit process was used. That process takes a lot of time and costs a lot of money. And so as a result of that, we changed it to a business license to make it easier for churches to do these. That approval was valid for five years, so it expired last year, and so now, in order to re-up it, this is the first one we're running through on the actual business license process that we created. As the mayor alluded to, the original packet included an ordinance that would change one of the requirements, specifically the duration requirement, from four weeks to eight weeks. This, staff is asking you to not adopt that ordinance tonight. We originally moved it or brought it forward because Roseville Lutheran Church wanted eight weeks. We were trying to accommodate that request, and we understood that the state fire marshal had relaxed their duration requirements. However, this morning... However, this morning, we believe they have not relaxed their duration requirements. The city council adopted the business license with the conditions that essentially mirrored the state fire marshal's guidance. And so I think we need to have a broader discussion of, do you want to go along with the state fire marshal's guidance, or do you want to create your own policy? I did talk to the church about this. They understand the situation that we're in. I've suggested that we ask the council to approve the business license, not the ordinance, which would approve the temporary overnight shelter for the original conditions, which is four weeks. That gets them the ability to start operation on January 1st. Between now and January 31st, we will talk with the church and the state fire marshal's office about how or if we can make that adjustment to eight weeks, and then if we can and we find out something seems appropriate, we'll come back to you in January to get them the additional four weeks if we found a reasonable solution. I've talked with the church. I believe they understand that. They are agreeable to that process, and so the only other thing I wanted to note is all of the other requirements that these shelters need to meet are being met with this church, and so we do believe they are entitled to the business license under those original conditions. So with that, I'm available to answer any questions. I know our building official and fire marshal are here as well, as well as Marty from the church.
Great. First of all, just double-check, does representative from the church want to speak at this time to this item? Looks like that is the case. Just ask that you introduce yourself as you begin your comments.
I'm Pastor Marty Wyatt. I don't have to speak to anything. I'm just here to answer any questions if you have them.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. With that, council, were there any questions for staff or the applicant? It's not appeared to be the case. You're getting off easy this evening, and we appreciate your flexibility on the whole issue of the timing, and certainly will work diligently to make sure by the end of January that we've got a plan to go forward if we can extend beyond the four weeks.
Thank you.
With that, I'll double-check, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? It's not appeared to be the case. Thank you again for being here this evening, and feel free to relax and sit back down in the audience. With that, we have the request before us to approve the business license and allow Roseville Lutheran Church the temporary overnight shelter from January 1st of 2025 for four weeks under our current code. Councilmember Ratten?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Ratten.
In unison.
Should I flip a coin? Seconded by Councilmember Strawn. Discussion on the motion. As the maker of the motion, Councilmember Ratten?
I appreciate all the staff work going into trying to figure out our way forward here, and I appreciate the work of the church doing really important service to our community.
All right. And then Councilmember Strawn, as the secondor?
I agree with those comments, and I'd just like to say, as a neighbor, close neighbor to the church, I know I had some concerns or some questions the last time this came forward, and I have yet to see anything that was concerning in the neighborhood, and I appreciate you taking on this important work, so thank you.
Other council discussion? Right. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving that business license for the temporary shelter signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that license is approved. Thank you again to everyone, and echoing the thanks to the church. That then brings us to a consideration of entering into an agreement for a comprehensive evaluation of police resources and operational efficiency in the police department with the Axtel Group, and we have our chief of police, Erica Scheider, with us this evening to bring this item before us for our consideration. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening. As you may recall, back on October 14th, the council had approved the police department to move forward in soliciting for proposals to conduct an outside evaluation of our police resources and our operational efficiency. As I had mentioned previously before council, this was an opportunity that we think is really important to take a holistic look at the entire department. I've been with the department for 25 years. I'm not aware, I know during my 25 years, this has never been done. I'm not aware in the history of our department that we've ever had an outside group come in and look at our resource allocation, workload distribution, scheduling, and call volumes. And really, we, as I mentioned back in October, this isn't just simply about looking at, do we need more officers? It's really looking at, how do we run more efficiently, especially given the challenges that the profession is facing? So we moved forward in putting out an RFP. This was posted on the city website. It also was posted on the league's site, and then we also sent it directly to firms that had done similar work here in Minnesota. We ended up receiving seven RFPs, or proposals that were received, and we put together a committee with seven staff members to review those, and that was made up of the city manager, our equity and inclusion manager, our deputy chief, our two lieutenants, our police service manager, and myself. And each proposal was independently scored by the committee, looking at kind of the qualifications and experience, their approach, really their understanding of Roseville's needs, past experience with similar projects, and then it was also important to look at the incorporation of equity and inclusion in their evaluation, and then obviously cost and value and schedule and timelines. And in the packet, it kind of outlines the waiting for each of those. The Axtel Group was unanimously ranked as a top firm by the committee. They really demonstrated an understanding of not only police work, but police work here in Minnesota, and especially being a first-string suburb. And we really felt that their proposal aligned with the police department's goal of taking a holistic and data-driven review of our operations. And a big piece that I know is important to the entire committee is we wanted to make sure that they were engaging the community. This wasn't just a police-driven discussion, but what does a community need? What do they expect of their police department? And then the last thing that really stood out is that they've done work with similar-sized agencies. I did personally talk to two of the chiefs that they recently did studies for, and both had really positive things in how it's helped to shape their strategic planning moving forward. I will note that they were not the lowest-cost option, but out of the top four ranked firms, they were the lowest cost. There were a few other firms that did come in at lower costs, and I'll just note that there were some things that were a little bit concerning with some of those lower-cost proposals. One of them did not include travel expenses and specifically noted that as consultants came in to do interviews or to meet with the community, that the city would need to incur those travel expenses, and there was a little bit of uncertainty on what those costs would ultimately end up being. There was another one of the lower-cost bids that specifically said that if they had to come present to city leadership or to the council, which we had asked, that we would have to pay additional travel expenses and hourly wages of the consultants coming to do that work. So there's a couple of things on some of those lower-cost bids that were a little bit concerning, just because we didn't know what those additional costs would ultimately end up being. With the Axtel Group, they are proposing a cost of $79,900, and I've met with finance, and we believe that there's salary savings in our current budget due to unfilled positions that we would be able to cover that cost. I just want to note, I know I was before this council earlier this fall and was really optimistic we were going to get to fully staffed. Since that, unfortunately, we had two unexpected people leave the profession that we had no idea, went to the private sector, and then we just had another resignation that goes into effect today of somebody who's leaving the state. So we were on track to be fully staffed, but unfortunately, we had those three unexpected vacancies that came up starting at the end of the summer. So with those salary savings, we do believe that we would be able to cover that. And so before you, it's just our recommendation to move forward to draft a professional service agreement with the Axtel Group. We would still bring that final agreement back to council for final approval. We just did not have it ready tonight, just due to the quick turnaround. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have or provide any additional information.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Questions from the council on the proposal this evening? Councilmember Schrader?
Thank you so much for the proposal, and I really appreciate tonight you also explaining some of the lower-cost bids. A lot of times, you know, they can have hidden things like that, and that's really important to know exactly what we're going to pay and not have some of this unknown. That was greatly appreciated that you added those pieces to this package tonight, so thank you.
Other questions or comments from councilmembers? Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this proposal to enter into this agreement with the Axtel Group for the evaluation, the comprehensive evaluation of the police department services and operations? It's not appeared to be the case. Is there a motion from the council to authorize staff to work to enter into a professional services agreement with Axtel Group as outlined for bringing back to the council for final approval?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Strawn to authorize staff to do so. Discussion on the motion. As the maker of the motion, Councilmember Graff?
I'd just like to thank Chief Scheider and the committee, because I look to as on the committee, and I appreciate you having the equity and inclusion manager there also. I thought your process was really very well thought out, and I think having outside eyes look at a department is a good idea. Once in a while, I don't think we need to do it every year, and we haven't been, because you just mentioned that it hasn't happened in all the years you've been here, so I think this is a very good idea. Appreciate your work.
As the secondor, Councilmember Strawn?
I'd just like to point out that, recognizing Todd Axtel's name, I did some Googling and was really appreciative for the many things that came forward, his personal experience as a police officer in, during times of Orlando Castillo and George Floyd and other things impacting, and so I think that probably speaks to his ability to understand Minnesota policing and kind of the culture where we grow from, so I really appreciate that. And really, he had a lot of very positive, I couldn't really find anything about him personally that wasn't really glowing, and so I look forward to having that ethical kind of take from it, too. Like, it's clearly important for him that a police force is really out to do good by the people, and I'm sure he'll instill that in the work he presents, and so it made me very supportive of this selection as well.
All right. Other discussion on the motion? And I would just echo the last comments in relation to certainly former chief Axtel, his time in St. Paul, you know, was, I think, exemplary during some very challenging times, both for the profession and for the community. I would note also on his team is John Harrington, who is also very well-respected in the industry, so to speak, and was also serving in the governor's staff during, or as a commissioner during that time as well, and has a long history of excellent service in public safety as well. So I think we've got the right people, it seems, to do this job and do a good job for the community. And I would just note, just, this probably goes without saying, but a key connection point in the process will be the MAC, Multicultural Advisory Committee, and obviously else, others in the community beyond that, but I think that's a good starting point for some of that engagement, and I appreciate their commitment to engagement in their proposal. So all of that just adds to the comments that have been made, and I certainly support this motion. With that, we have the motion before us to authorize the staff to work to enter into that agreement and bring it back to the council for final approval. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you again, Chief, and everyone involved. That then brings us to a number of compliance check failures that we had for age compliance in terms of service of alcohol. I believe alcohol and no tobacco in this particular instance. And so we will be taking those up individually, but I think we'll start probably with some general information to kick the process off, and we have our deputy chief, Joe Adams, with us this evening to get this process underway. Chief Adams?
Mayor, council? Each year, the Roseville Police Department conducts two alcohol compliance checks of all alcohol license holders. This year, the first round of checks were completed on March 23rd. We had a total of five failures for our first round, which was presented in front of you. The second round was completed on October 12th, where we had a total of seven alcohol compliance failures. For 2024, all businesses with city liquor licenses were provided, letters advising them the city would be conducting alcohol compliance checks, which, for the first time, we actually sent one out, a second one right before we did the second one. We traditionally only send out one per year. Just given the number of failures we've had, we decided to send one out right before this. Unfortunately, it's not much avail. The letter reminded them of the requirement that their employees must undergo annual approved server training programs. Due to the total number of failures, I'll provide a brief summary of each incident, followed by staff recommendations. I know that there's some businesses present here today, so we'll give them time to speak. And with previous approval from the city attorney, I'll lay a foundation for the date and age checker just on the first one, which will run concurrent for all the seven, just for matter of time on this. So with that, I'll get into the first one, if okay with you, Mayor.
The first one is item 7F, which is to consider the compliance failure for Chuchao Liquor.
On October 12th, 2024, an underage compliance checker went into Chuchao Liquor to conduct a compliance check. While there, the checker selected alcohol and proceeded to the counter. An employee then sold their checker the alcohol without asking for identification. The employee was issued administrative citation, which has since been paid. Management later provided the necessary training documentation to PD staff. This is Chuchao's first violation in 36 months. It's staff's recommendation for the council to issue and administer the presumptive penalty pursuant to city code for off-sale license holders for a first violation, which is a mandatory minimum penalty of a $2,000 fine and no liquor license suspension.
Thank you, Chief. Is there a representative of Chuchao Liquor with us this evening? It's not appeared to be the case. Do we have any questions for staff from the council on this particular violation? All right. We do want to provide an opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to the proposed penalty for Chuchao Liquor's compliance check violation this evening? It's not appeared to be the case. The requested action is, once again, to authorize the presumptive penalty of a $2,000 fine and no license suspension for this compliance failure. Is there a motion from the council?
So moved.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Schrader, seconded by Councilmember Graff to authorize that presumptive penalty. Discussion on the motion. As the maker, Councilmember Schrader?
No, it's pretty clear-cut.
All right. As the secondor?
No.
Other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of authorizing that presumptive penalty signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That penalty is authorized. Item 7G is consider the presumptive penalty for MGM Liquor. Chief?
While at MGM, the checker selected alcohol and proceeded to the counter. An employee then sold their checker the alcohol without asking for identification. Management later provided the necessary training documentation to PD staff. This is MGM's first violation under its new ownership in the last 36 months, though they did have another compliance failure within that timeframe. It was confirmed through city staff that there is no relation at all between the previous owner and the current owner, therefore bringing it forward as the first violation in 36 months. It is staff's recommendation for council to issue and administer the presumptive penalty pursuant to city code for off-sale license holders for a first violation, which is a mandatory minimum penalty of $2,000 and no liquor license suspension.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Questions from the council? Councilmember Strawn?
I thought that when we talked about the change of ownership, that it was the prior owner and that the business was now shared between two individuals, but that the original owner was still on the ownership. Maybe I'm mixing it up with something else, but I thought that was what was happening with MGM, that it was one owner, A, and then B added to it, and that it's now A and B.
I think we did confirm in looking at the ownership that it is a completely different person, and we did not find any connection that we're aware of between them. So we believe they are separate entities, and it was an arms-length transaction, and there's no relationship.
Yep.
Other questions from the council? Is there a representative of MGM here with us this evening? It's not appeared to be the case. Do we have anybody from the public who wishes to speak to this proposed presumptive penalty for MGM for their compliance check failure this evening? Seeing no one, we have a recommended motion from the staff for that presumptive penalty of a $2,000 fine and no suspension.
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Ratten to authorize that presumptive penalty. Any discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That penalty is authorized. Item 7H is to consider the presumptive penalty for Kyoto. We'll turn it over to Chief again to bring this item forward.
While at Kyoto, the compliance checker ordered a beer. The employee did not check ID and proceeded to serve alcohol to her checker. Kyoto has provided their training records to PD staff. The presumptive penalty, which this will be pursuant to city code for on-sale license holders for a second violation in 36 months, is a mandatory minimum penalty of $2,000 and a five-day liquor license suspension.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Questions from council for staff on this item? Is there a representative of Kyoto here this evening that wishes to speak? It does not appear to be the case. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this presumptive penalty request this evening? Also, does not appear to be the case. With that, we have the request before us to authorize the mandatory minimum presumptive penalty of $2,000 fine and a five-day liquor license suspension. Is there a motion from the council?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Ratten, to authorize that presumptive penalty. Discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That penalty is authorized. The next presumptive penalty under consideration is item 7I, which is to consider the presumptive penalty for Parkway Pizza. Turn it over to Deputy Chief Adams again. Chief.
While at Parkway, the compliance checker ordered a beer. The employee did check ID, however, they proceeded to serve alcohol to our checker. Parkway has also provided their training records to PD staff. The presumptive penalty pursuant to city code for on-sale license holders for a first violation is the mandatory minimum penalty of a $2,000 fine and a one-day liquor license suspension.
Right. And is there a representative of Parkway here this evening who wishes to speak to this item?
Yes.
Feel free to come up and have a seat at the microphone at the table. Just ask that you introduce yourself as you start your remarks and address your comments or questions to the council. Feel free to sit right in front of the microphone there.
Nice to meet you. My name's Lee Mu. I'm the general manager at Parkway Pizza Roseville, just here to answer questions.
Okay. Counsel, are there any questions for the general manager of Parkway? Councilmember Groff.
How often do you do training for your staff on this issue?
Well, when they first become a server, I am sign the documents, and then every week when I think of it, hey, make sure you're checking IDs, make sure you're checking IDs, I know I go with them over meetings every month on compliance checks.
And do you stress the difference in the underage because they are, they're different?
Yes. Yep. Underage, vertical.
Right.
And it clearly states underage, and then when you turn of age, horizontal.
Good, because we don't like to have you here, and we don't want you to be doing this, and I just think it seems like it shouldn't be this often, so I appreciate your work on that.
Other questions? Thank you for being here this evening and taking this seriously, and we'd love to never see you again other than organizing your restaurant. With that, also, we'll check, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this proposed presumptive penalty for Parkway Pizza? All right, seeing no one, is there a motion from the council?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Schroeder. Discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That penalty is authorized. That then brings us to item 7J, which is to consider a presumptive penalty for Osaka. Chief.
While at Osaka, the compliance checker ordered wine. The employee did not check ID and proceeded to serve the alcohol to our checker and walked away. After being served, the checker, or the employee returned to the table and then asked for ID, but did not remove the alcohol from the table, which constitutes serving of alcohol. Osaka has provided their training records to PD staff, and the presumptive penalty pursuant to city code for on-sale license holders for a first violation is a mandatory minimum penalty of $2,000 and a one-day liquor license suspension.
Thank you, Chief. Other questions for staff on this violation? Is there a representative of Osaka here this evening that wishes to speak? It does not appear to be the case. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak as to this proposed presumptive penalty this evening? Also, does not appear to be the case. With that, we have the requested motion, once again, for the presumptive penalty for the first violation of a mandatory $2,000 fine and a one-day suspension.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Strawn, to authorize that presumptive penalty. Any discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that penalty is authorized. That brings us to item 7K, which is to consider the presumptive penalty for Par 365. Chief.
While at Par 365, the compliance checker ordered alcohol from the bar. The employee then checked ID but proceeded to serve alcohol to our checker. They have provided their training records to PD staff, and the presumptive penalty pursuant to city code for on-sale license holders for a first violation is the mandatory minimum penalty of $2,000 and a one-day liquor license suspension. And I'll note, in my earlier documentation to the council, I believe I noted that they had not provided their training records, but I have since been in contact with them and am now in possession of them.
Thank you, Chief, and I note we do have representatives from Par 365 this evening with us. I don't know if they wish to speak on this, but feel free to come on up, and once again, if you can just introduce yourselves as you begin your comments. Welcome.
Thank you for having us. Thomas Jackson, co-founder, president, Par 365.
Mercedes Jackson, CEO and co-founder of Par 365.
Welcome.
So, yep.
Do you want to say?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, you know, we take the offense very seriously. I think it was kind of a perfect storm in terms of how our business was going. We lost our key general manager, our general manager, as well as our lead bartender. I was on staff, and we had just hired that person, probably not less than a week ago, so we were training. She was not actually even supposed to be at the bar, so I was there. I was the person who reminded her to kind of check the ID and her position, and with her experience that she had said she had, it seemed like the appropriate thing to do. Since then, we've hired new staff, more experienced, more tenured. We've doubled down on training in terms of reminding people to check IDs, how to check IDs, when to check IDs, and all of the above, so we're hoping this will be the both first and last time that this happens.
And I would add, you know, being a seasonal business, I don't know if you guys have been over there, we were essentially dead during the summer and September even this year, and so we were in the middle of onboarding all new employees at the same time that we lost our general manager, who left as of October 1st. So, you know, as Thomas said, it was a perfect storm. We were doing kind of everything we could to get people trained in, and we certainly do take this very seriously, and I understand that it's a mandatory penalty. It's a huge penalty for our business, given that we are just now getting into where we're actually making some revenue, and I would ask if it's at all possible to waive the penalty in light of the extenuating circumstances that you would consider that.
Thank you. Appreciate that insight. Questions from the council for the owners? All right. We thank you for being here this evening and for letting us know more of the circumstances and your request for the consideration of waiving the penalty. We will certainly take that under consideration as the council, and we'll, obviously, very shortly, you'll probably know the result of that discussion. We appreciate you being here this evening, and feel free to have a seat back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again.
All right, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item, this particular proposed penalty this evening? It does not appear to be the case. We have the request before us. We've heard the request for waiving or adjusting perhaps the penalty based on mitigating circumstances. I will look to the council for a motion.
Motion to administer the presumptive penalty pursuant to code.
Good.
It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Schroeder, to administer the presumptive penalty as outlined in the code. As the maker of the motion, Councilmember Strawn.
Thank you. I know it's difficult, and it would be great. It just puts us in a position where it's difficult for us to make that decision and when it's appropriate to allow a deviance from that and when it is not. So in fairness to the rest of the businesses, we really do need to keep a consistent application of our ordinance as presented, but we wish you the best, we really do.
As the second, Councilmember Schroeder.
I would agree with the previous comments, and yes, it's really hard, and I know, you know, training staff can be a challenge, and as Vero always says, we hope we don't see you again in front of this, because we really do not enjoy doing this, so, but we do have to treat all our businesses the same.
Other discussion on the motion? All right. And I know that you've been before the council a number of times before, and we've really been working to help you as you start this business, and it is, as was noted, unfortunate that you're back before us this evening. We do appreciate you, you know, taking your responsibility for, you know, the violation, and we understand the magnitude of the penalty, and that is part of the consideration, is that we want to make sure it is a disincentive for, you know, violations to occur. The challenge, I think, we have is that we only do the compliance checks a couple of times a year. We really don't know what's happening the rest of the year, and the whole purpose of these regulations is to prevent the sale to underage persons, because we know the damage that can happen to individuals and families in our community as a result of that, and certainly, I don't think anybody involved in this industry, let alone in regulating it, you know, wants those tragedies to happen, but it's, you know, one perfect storm away from being the possibility of that, and so that's why we have this regime set up in our enforcement. So, you know, like I said, we really do hope that the only time we see you is when we're patronizing your facility, and we do wish you success in staffing up and dealing with your loss of your manager, et cetera, and being able to continue. So, once again, we appreciate you being here this evening. With that, we have the motion before us to authorize the presumptive penalty as outlined. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That penalty is authorized. The final case this evening is item 7L, which is a presumptive penalty for Cub Foods in Larpenter. Once again, Deputy Chief Adams.
While at Cub, and I guess I should note that this is the grocery store side, not the liquor store side, the checker selected alcohol and proceeded to the counter. An employee then sold their checker the alcohol without asking for identification. Management provided their training documentation to me earlier today, and this is Cub's first violation in 36 months. It's staff's recommendation for council to issue and administer the presumptive penalty pursuant to city code for off-sale license holders for a first violation, which is a mandatory minimum penalty of $2,000 and no liquor license suspension.
Thank you, Chief, and I appreciate you noting that it was the grocery store side, which is the 3-2 license holder as opposed to the full liquor off-sale license holder on the adjacent liquor store. I note that we don't have separate penalties for the 3-2 licenses as compared to other off-sale, and so it is the same. I do note also the representative of Cub Foods this evening, if you wish to speak, it's totally your option.
I'm here to see the process.
Okay. We appreciate you being here, and certainly, if you had something you wanted to say, you're certainly welcome to do so. Counsel, or I should check also, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this proposed presumptive penalty? Once again, does not appear to be the case. With that, we have a request before us to authorize the issuance of that presumptive penalty of $2,000 with no license suspension. Is there a motion from the council?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Ratten. Discussion on the motion?
No.
Before the final vote on the final presumptive penalty this evening, I did want to note that I have occasionally been to various license-holding establishments in Roseville, and it does seem to be that the establishments who have made the investment in the electronic technology to scan the IDs has really seemed to be, obviously, you still have to request it and scan it, but I think that seems to be a little more foolproof, but I understand that there's also a cost associated with it. But gosh, you know, we want you to do whatever you can that's within reason for your business model to never be before us with these violations, so I just wanted to mention that as something I had noted in my limited experience in that regard in my time. With that, we have the motion before us on this presumptive penalty. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. That penalty is authorized. Thank you again to Deputy Chief Adams and to our compliance checker and officer, or officers who were involved in the compliance checks in this round, and once again, we encourage all of our license holders to be diligent and vigilant and make sure that we're providing a safe environment for people in our community in relation to the consumption and use of alcohol. Thank you again. That brings us then to our final item in relation to these seven license holders. We have not put their license renewals for 2025 in with the group that we approved last week. We wanted to provide an opportunity for the council to take into account these compliance check violations as part of our process for considering the request for renewals for 2025. It would be appropriate, unless there are any questions from the council, to make a motion with respect to the requested license approvals. Councilmember Strawn.
Recommend approval of the liquor licenses as presented.
Second.
All right. A motion by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Schroeder, to approve the renewals for 2025 for the seven license holders who had the violations under consideration this evening. Discussion on the motion, as the maker, Councilmember Strawn.
I think we are in first, and in one case, a second violation. I don't think that should jeopardize the future of these organizations, and they've all provided their training records, so I'm hopeful that they will be able to turn it around, and we won't see them again for a really long time, if ever.
As the second, Councilmember Schroeder.
I think it's very clear how our systems work when it comes to license and penalties, so therefore, I think this is in line.
Okay. Other discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving those renewals for 2025 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Those licenses are approved, those renewals are approved. Again, thank you to everyone. That brings us to a consideration of adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter 317 related to our hotel licensing regulations, and I'll turn it over to City Manager Trudgen to introduce this item to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we're here to consider amending Chapter 317, which is the hotel licensing regulations. As you'll recall, and I see right now I have a typo on the first line, April 8th, 2024, not in '25, did not jump to the future. We did pass an ordinance, sorry about that, that, one last gift for Councilmember Ratten. The circle.
Does that mean I can't vote on this?
No, no. 2024, we did pass an ordinance, and in the meantime, as I detailed in some previous communications, as well as in the staff report, that we have inspected all 12 hotels in Roseville. It took a substantial amount of time, in fact, more time than we anticipated initially, about 68 hours to inspect all 1,356 hotel rooms. We did find numerous violations, nothing to the level of life safety, but enough that it's going to take some time for those to be resolved. We generally have received cooperation from most of the hotels, and they're working diligently to correct those. Our original plan was to have the hotel license take effect January 1st, 2025. As we got into October and November, it looked more and more that that would be impossible to ensure that there was sufficient time for the hotels to make the corrections and for us to issue a full license without any conditions. I think it's pretty important that we start off our first round of licenses to make sure that there's a clean slate and they have all the corrections on there. While we could have considered conditional licenses, and that's something I did consider, after consulting with the city attorney, we ultimately decided the best way to go was to delay implementation, which does now require us to amend the ordinances to change the date from January 1st, 2025, to a suggested date of April 1st, 2025. I have talked to staff that are involved in the inspections and the follow-up, and they feel that is more than adequate time for the corrections to be made, and after that, if they're still not made, I think we've given, shown a pretty good track record of giving appropriate time for those deficiencies to be corrected. And I know many hotels are diligently working on them, are pretty close to being there anyway, but, so with that in mind, we have proposed an ordinance that's in front of you tonight, and I pulled up the ordinance as is in the packet. We just have a couple changes. One is in Section 31702B, Line 76, so I'll pull up here, which talks about when the applications are due. As before, we are going from January 1st to December 31st. With this adjustment, we are feeling that the application's deadline should be December 1st. That would give us the full month of December, basically four months to complete all the work that we need to have. We do hope that in future years, the inspections will be quicker and be less violations, and it'll be much more efficient, but that should give us sufficient amount of time, so that's the one change we have there. The second change is in 31702, Lines 161 to 163, where we talk about the term of the license, and as I mentioned before, we had it annually expire at the end of December. We are adjusting that, so it will expire March 31st, so really run from April 1st to March 31st of each year, so those are those. So those are those changes. Then the final change is really the effective date, which is at the end of the ordinance, starting at line 267, and really the important one, I'm sorry. Go further enough. There we go. 31706, line 320. And section B really talks about the effective date of April 1st for the need to actually have a license in hand in order to operate. So really, three simple tweaks to the ordinance. We understand this is a very significant priority for the council, and we wish we could have been able to make this effective January 1st, but I think in the end will be better served, and hotels will be better served if we delay that to April 1st to give us opportunity to make sure everything is corrected. This has been communicated to hotels, and as I've said, the hotels have been generally pretty cooperative and understand the need. I think they were a little bit surprised in the amount of violations that were there as well, so we'll work together to get that corrected and hope to be bringing back licenses to the council in March of 2025. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tredgen. Are there questions from the council on the proposed ordinance change? Councilmember Strawn.
There was a date noted of December 1st for a deadline. Does that mean that anyone who seeks the licensing for 2025 would have already had to have that in to you by yesterday?
So all the applications have been in for this upcoming year?
Okay.
So in future years, it would have to be by December 1st. So for '26, let's say, you'd have to do by December 1st, 2025.
We already have all the expected, anticipated for this coming year. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, other questions for staff? All right, hearing none, I'll provide an opportunity for members of the public to speak to this item this evening. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this proposed ordinance change? All right, seeing no one, we'll move to council consideration. We have the request to approve the ordinance as outlined with the changes Mr. Tredgen just described. Is there a motion relative to the ordinance?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Schroder, seconded by Councilmember Groff to adopt that ordinance, changing the dates as outlined. Discussion on the motion, as the maker, Councilmember Schroder.
I appreciate you wanting to do this. You know, my byproduct is it's better to do it right than fast, so to do it properly, it makes a lot of sense.
All right, and as the second, Councilmember Groff?
I know on the board for a visit to Roseville, a couple of the hotels are represented there as board members also, and so we had a discussion about this, and they were surprised, as Mr. Tredgen said, about the number of violations. They weren't unhappy about it, but they were surprised about it, and were actually pleased that they were getting all that up to snuff, but it does take some time, and so this is only reasonable. As Councilmember Schroder said, do it correctly and in a timely way rather than rush it, and we don't need to put undue pressure on people that are trying to cooperate with us, and that's my logic for supporting it.
That makes sense. Other discussion on the motion, Councilmember Ratten?
I would concur with this, and I would note that it's this kind of thoughtful process that we really appreciate from staff, that we don't just ramp things through, but we take that pause, and that's the best way to make a good decision for our community. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other discussion on the motion to adopt the ordinance with the change to the date and timing? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Is there a motion to authorize publication of a summary?
So moved. Second.
Right, it's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Schroder to adopt the resolution authorizing the publication of a summary of this ordinance. Discussion on that motion, hearing none. Once again, this requires a supermajority. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, meeting that supermajority requirement. That then brings us to, that brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Tredgen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, we have several items, and I'll go through these here fairly quickly. Item 10A approves payments in the amount of $1,661,382.2. Item 10B approves business licenses for one recycling hauler and two solid waste haulers. Item 10C approves several purchases, including an expenditure to repair the copper wiring that illuminated the trail around Bennett Lake that was stolen two weeks ago, an expenditure to hire a contractor to televise sanitary and stormwater pipes in 2025, and the purchase and installation of 24 wayfinding signs throughout the city. This item, as you know, was discussed at the last council meeting, and this purchase will utilize the full $200,000 of the ARPA money that was designated for this project. Staff will be bringing forward a future discussion to the council about the final placement of the 24 signs later in 2025. Item 10D approves the positions that you created as part of the 2025 budget. Item 10E approves the schedule for city proclamations to be taken up in 2025. All told, there are 25 proclamations planned for 2025. I would note that the list includes a proclamation for Addiction Awareness Month in September that was previously brought up by Councilmember Strawn. I think, having a conversation with the mayor, there's maybe some different approaches. We can look at a week, a month, and we have to do some more research. We'll bring that back for further discussion to kind of land on what we actually want to recognize there. Item 10F approves a resolution approving the work completed and authorized as the final payment for the 2023 pathway project. Item 10G approves a resolution toward the design contract for the 2025 sewer lining project to bolt it in Mink. Item 10H approves certifying delinquent miscellaneous charges to certain properties with Ramsey County, such as property abatement charges, false alarm charges, repeat nuisance and fire inspections. This is the one that I brought up earlier in the meeting, and let me just get to the specific address. It's at the tip of my tongue right now. It was...
Snelling Avenue.
Yeah.
2801.
2801 Snelling Avenue. So that is in the lower part of the sheet there. That's a handout of $354 and plus the collection fee, so that's a total of $379.50. They have submitted an appeal that we have not heard on that, so I'd like to have that one removed from certification, and depending on that outcome of that appeal, we will bring that back or not. So we look for approval of that entire list with the exception of 2801 Snelling Avenue. And then two more items. Item 10I approves the renewal of a short-term rental license for 1820 Chatsworth. And then finally, item 10J approves entering into a joint powers agreement with the city of Falcon Heights for engineering services. I would note that Roseville has been providing engineering services to Falcon Heights since 2005, so nearly 20 years, and that is the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tredgen. Is there a motion from the council on the consent agenda?
No.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Ratten to approve the consent items as presented, noting the change to 10H, which is taking off the address at 2801 Snelling Avenue. That will be taken up after the appeal is handled. Discussion on the motion.
I'd just like to add a further context for that 10E with regards to the proclamation. September is both suicide awareness and addiction awareness month, and it was after reaching out and speaking with the CAT, some of the members of the CAT team and others, that it seemed like it might be worth discussing how we would discuss that, just knowing that those are important components, and so that's why I had brought it up a whole year in advance.
Appreciate that. Other discussion on the motion? And just to that point, I think in a little bit of research today, I noted that there are several different addiction prevention and awareness days and months and weeks through the course of the year, and it wasn't that we should pick the best one necessarily, but that we should have a discussion as a council as to perhaps the approach, and I appreciate the additional information about the suicide prevention as well. That might be a good tie-in for that month, so, but it's appropriate to have that council discussion, and so we'll schedule that early enough in the year where it shouldn't impact timeliness of whatever we end up doing, so I appreciate that. Other discussion on the consent items this evening?
I just wanted to add, it was at the request of a mom who lives here in Roseville, whose son had died by suicide and who is very tied into NAMI, that it was requested for us to consider that suicide awareness and tied it with addiction awareness. So, you know, it was a member of the public who asked that we take a chance to take that acknowledgement.
All right, thank you. If there's no further discussion on the consent agenda this evening, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Those items are approved. That brings us to the future agenda review. Mr. Tredgen.
So our next meeting is next year, January 6th, 2025. We'll start off evening with the oath of office for Councilmember Strawn and Councilmember-Elect Matt Bauer, and a little ceremony at the beginning. We'll also have a proclamation for MLK Day. We'll receive the Public Works 2025 Work Plan. We'll discuss commissioned vacancies. We're also looking at the city council and advisory commission rules of procedure, which we do every year, talk about city council liaisons, and appoint the acting mayor, and look to approve the legislative priorities at that meeting. I would anticipate we might add some more in the time between now and then, but that's what we have for now. Would point out that on January 10th, which is a Friday, we do have a strategic planning session at 9:00 AM, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This is kind of the wrap-up. The location is still TBD, but we'll get that out once we get that sorted out. So January 10th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then we have our January 13th EDA meeting, which will do the start-of-the-year election of officers, but then also receive the housing study update that we pulled from last week's agenda. We anticipate that, it's probably about an hour's worth of time. And then we'll roll into the work session and really discuss the maintenance center project, sales tax approval, and just kind of start talking about some next steps and not expecting that we're going to have all the answers or have all decisions made, but to start that process talking, thought a work session would be pretty good. I'm really trying to limit what else we talk about that means we have sufficient amount of time to really dive deep into that. So that's the future agenda. That's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tredgen. Are there questions from the council on the future agenda as outlined, or items council members wish to suggest for future council meetings?
Oh.
Councilmember Ratten.
Great idea.
Maybe I shouldn't have said anything. Reports and announcements, all right, from council members?
The Ryson-Larpenter Alliance.
The winter warm-up on December 14th, Saturday.
Saturday, the 14th.
From 1 to 3.
On the Maplewood corner of Ryson-Larpenter. There will be llamas, that's all you need to know.
That's right.
There will be reindeer on that same day at approximately the same time at Troy's Corner Auto on Hamlin and Bee, so you decide your animal.
Or try to do both?
Or try to do both.
And that may be an appropriate spacing between llamas and reindeer as well. I don't know enough to be sure about that.
I really don't know.
All right. With that, there is no further business before the council this evening?
Oh, Roseville Business Council.
Ah, this Wednesday?
Wednesday night.
5:00 PM? 5:00 PM?
Four to six?
Four, I think it's four.
Four, okay, four to six. At Cedar Hill.
Yeah.
All right. Now, the only item we have left on our agenda is motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Ratten, seconded by Councilmember Schroder to adjourn. No discussion on a motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and we are adjourned at 8:02 PM.